Hello.
Just a second, we'll share our screen here.
Deeper into the depths of water SDC calculations methodology.
We discussed that in detail at CDC tonight, so.
Did?
A little bit. Slightly.
Mentioned it? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You said in detail and then just slightly?
No, no.
Well, I thought it was.
Which one was it?
We had.
Slightly in detail.
We had some law school.
And, oh, there we go, maybe that's.
We had projects.
There he is.
Talking about you, Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We saw you.
I just saw your thing, not me. The SDCs, Bill. SDCs.
Made it right on time.
Your favorite subject.
Did I salute the flag first?
Oh, we're past that and we'll tell them.
I was taking final questions on the.
He missed the whole thing.
Well, his level is definitely too high, I'll settle for nine.
Oh, oh.
Hey, I think it's ready to go.
I've been to Redmond, it's not close.
Thank you for coming back, bud.
Oh, absolutely. We paid him. It looks like it's the EF handout. Okay, that's, that's fine, so, um, you can still make it bigger. So we're here to talk about water SDCs. I, I saw that you adopted both the sewer and stormwater SDCs and so, uh, really there are just some questions and issues to resolve around the water SDC calculation.
But we did adopt, uh, the water rate.
Water rates, basically.
Last, yeah, last meeting, uh, just did not include the SDCs.
Okay, so, and that was, was that just the increase or was that the rate structure change too?
Rate structure.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, yeah, it's really just, uh, down to the, uh, the water SDCs. And then I'm gonna try to get you guys some money back with a tax review.
Oh, nice.
But, uh, but onto the pressing business. Uh, uh, the SDC, as you know, we're, we're, basically we're looking at the cost of the system infrastructure and figuring out, you know, how many residential equivalents to allocate the cost to. And so this is just a quick reminder about the history. Uh, the current charge of $9,095 is based on a 2008 calculation, uh, with some adjustments for inflation over the years. Uh, we, we did a review in 2017 as part of that rate study, uh, and come up with a, a result, it was more of a refresh of the methodology that we used back then. Uh, and I think, uh, overall, uh, in response to some concerns that the development community had raised, uh, we took a more comprehensive look at the methodology this time. So I think that's why we're talking about some, uh, some methodology changes that were not factored into the 2017 analysis. Uh, and since the current charge is based on the 2008 analysis, I'm not gonna really go into the 2017. We'll skip over that, focus on the, the material changes. Uh, you, you may recognize this table here, uh, and depending on how long you looked at the table before, you'd recognize that some of the numbers have changed, uh, in the updated calculation. Uh, there were a couple of, uh, edits that I made and, and kind of reviewing and addressing some of the questions that, that Cherry forwarded me, uh, and I thought that they were reasonable. Uh, the most material one is the fire component of the charge, which I'll get into more in, in a minute. Uh, previously, what I had done is, uh, use the denominator being based on, uh, meter equivalents, kind of like the rest of the, the cost basis, uh, but weighted to reflect the fire flow requirements. So, single family was, uh, you know, 1,000 gallons per minute, multifamily and commercial being 2,500 gallons per minute, uh, and then irrigation not, not having any. Uh, as I got into it and I thought about it and, uh, it actually made more sense to me to have it be based on meters, not meter equivalents, because, you know, if somebody, you have a commercial, uh, connection, you know, an eight-inch commercial connection, uh, they don't usually require more fire flow than, uh, a one-inch commercial connection. It's really set based on the land use type independently of meter size. Uh, so I reflected, uh, the denominator for the fire component to reflect, uh, fire-weighted meters, not meter equivalents, and so that reduced the denominator and increased the charge. Uh, and so, uh, we were, I think, at like 53, 5400 last time. Uh, now the charge is 5766, uh, per residential equivalent. Now, now that I've gotten through that, uh, let's rewind and talk about why there is a fire charge in the first place. Uh, and so, uh, the 2008 calculation did not, uh, have that. Uh, but at some point, there was some allocation, the existing SDC structure, uh, has a charge. It charges, uh, $9,095 per, uh, residential equivalent for a single family. And then for commercial, uh, it charged, there's a higher charge for the same meter size. Uh, and I can, I can dig out what that is. Uh, I think it's 11,000. Let's see. It's a little bit over 11,000 compared to the 9,095 for a five-eighths by three-quarter inch connection. Uh, the irrigation charge is actually slightly lower. So that would suggest that historically, uh, there was a, a fire protection cost allocation, uh, to the various customer types. Uh, the 2008 calculation did not get into that, it really just focused on updating the charge per residential equivalent. Uh, and likewise, the interim review in 2017 did not get into it either. Uh, but in trying to take that closer look at the SDC, uh, to the extent that we wanted to have class-specific, uh, SDCs, uh, we needed to reopen that issue, and so that's why there is a, a fire component now. Uh, we don't have to do that, uh, but if we took out the fire component, you would basically have the same SDC structure for all customer types, so commercial, multifamily, single family and irrigation regu- uh, and it would only be defined by the meter size, uh, at, at that point. Uh, and so, so we looked at that, uh, I, I would say, given that commercial and multifamily have higher fire flow requirements, uh, they would pay a lower SDC and then the single family SDC would go up as a result of, of that change, if you were to do it. Uh, and so, uh, just kind of going through, uh, you'll also notice there are three columns. One is, uh, for the supply component of the charge, uh, and that historically was based on isolating, uh, supply costs, taking them out and focusing on, uh, the cost of the Tacoma supply as being, uh, what you want to recover from growth, uh, through the SDC. Uh, and then the fire protection component, as I said, is really trying to isolate the costs that are attributable to meeting those higher fire flow requirements. So, oversizing infrastructure like mains and reservoirs and things. Uh, and then other is basically everything that isn't supply or fire. Uh, and so then, kind of going through the various lines, we start out with the existing asset inventory, uh, and then, uh, we looked at the, the line item detail and we, we identified assets that were, you know, reservoirs versus, uh, you know, water mains versus pump stations, booster pumps and things like that. Uh, and we allocated each type of asset and the cost associated with each type of asset, uh, to fire flow based on, uh, different metrics. And so, you know, if we start out with, uh, pumping, uh, we would, we allocated a share to, uh, to, to fire flow based on, uh, there were two fire pumps identified, uh, at, at one of the booster pump stations, uh, and that was basically fire-related, uh, as a percentage of the total pumping capacity of, of all the booster pump stations. Uh, and so just to give you a sense of the scale there, uh, for the booster pumps, it ended up being about 11% of the cost of the booster pump stations to fire protection. And it's based on the fire pumps at the Ponderosa Booster Station as a percentage of the total, as I said. Uh, for reservoirs, we looked at the functions of storage in the water system plan. So, uh, what's operational storage, which is just kind of keeping everything going? Uh, you get into equalizing storage, which is really meaning peak demands, not really fire. Uh, there's fire suppression storage, uh, which really is about meeting fire protection. Uh, and then there's, uh, like standby storage, which isn't really related. Uh, and so, the fire suppression storage, uh, as a, uh, percentage of the total system-wide storage capacity is about six, uh, 16%, and that's why we allocated 16% of the costs associated with reservoirs, uh, to that. And, and I'm talking about fixed asset costs, uh, capital projects, uh, from future cost basis and, and so forth. Uh, water mains, we, uh, allocated 31% of the cost to fire protection. And, and that was based on the estimated cost of oversizing eight-inch mains to 12-inch mains to accommodate fire flow. Uh, so we look at the system, there are all sort of different sizes of mains. Uh, and sort of below eight inches, uh, there isn't really capacity to provide fire flow. And then when you get to the really large mains that are about, uh, supply transmission, there isn't really fire flow, uh, uh, related to that either. So it's really those kind of middle-sized mains. And so we assumed, uh, that eight-inch mains could be six-inch mains without fire flow. Uh, 10-inch mains could be eight-inch mains, and then 12-inch mains could be 10-inch mains. So basically, one size increment and, and that kind of middle-sized category. And we said, okay, so if we attribute that portion of the cost to fire, what is everything, you know, what percentage is that, and that is 31%. Uh, and then, of course, uh, the costs associated with hydrants, uh, those were 100% fire protection. Uh, and then sort of anything else, sort of general capital improvements, uh, we allocated about 18% based on the aggregate allocation of everything else. And so that's, we did that for each of those line items there, including the existing assets, adjusting for, uh, for provision for asset retirements, which is really related to the CIP, uh, looking at the interest, uh, and, and the other adjustments that are shown up there. Uh, and so that's really how we came up with that functionalization. Uh, another question that came up, oh, I'm sorry.
So. The 2017 study didn't do that though, right?
Uh, the, the 2017 study, uh, did supply and other, but it did not do the separate fire.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, but it was still kind of the same idea, just without that separate fire protection allocation. Yes?
So essentially what you're saying is that, um, there is an additional charge because of fire protection? So if you don't have a sprinkler system, you're not getting a discount? But if you do have a sprinkler system, you're getting a discount?
No, this, th- this is actually about the health of the public water system. And to the extent that, you know, you're oversizing reservoirs and water mains, booster pumps to deliver fire flow to meet those public fire flow requirements. That's what is built in here. If there's a cost associated with private systems, uh, are, are not built in here. Yeah, it's just the, the public infrastructure. And, and I will clarify for the 20, 2008 calculation, it's not that we were not including the cost of those facilities, they were just in the other column, we didn't pull them out to then allocate them in the, kind of the more equitable fashion based on the fire flow requirements.
So, so what you're saying is the fire charges were always there, they just were not in a specific allocated column?
Exactly, they were allocated to everybody based on that, sort of the meter size, but there was no fire flow component that was used to allocate the cost, the costs were still there.
Okay, but the, but because it is, it is required anyway, just based on law, I'm assuming.
Uh, the fire flow requirements are required by the fire marshal.
Yeah.
As part of the system plan.
Yeah.
You don't have to recover the cost that way, uh, but like I mentioned a few minutes ago, if you don't recover it that way, everyone's gonna pay kind of equally for that fire flow component as opposed to the types of land use that drive the higher fire flow requirements.
Okay. Yeah.
Because if you only had residential, you'd only have to provide 1,000 gallons per minute. But with commercial, you have to be able to provide 2,500 gallons per minute. Uh, and so it's recognizing that differential in the provided. Any other questions on the allocation of the cost basis?
No, thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, so then we get into the future cost basis, and there was a question about where this came from. Uh, and there are a few pieces that I'll get into. Uh, the initial basis is the, the CIP that you, uh, reviewed and, and approved at the November 1st council work session. And that was a six-year CIP and included a series of projects. Uh, we, the, the CIP that staff gave us, it also included $200,000 for the Tacoma Point, um, tank replacement. Uh, so that, basically it was 36.8 million was the total of that together. Uh, then we backed out inflation because, uh, we don't want to build inflation into the cost basis. Especially if, you know, first of all, it's a guess, and second of all, you know, if there's a, a, a CPI or E and R adjustment factor, you're inflating inflated estimates. And so, in the, the general practice is to use current dollars for the future component that you include. So, so we backed out inflation, uh, and then we also added additional CIP projects that were in the water system plan beyond the six-year planning period. Uh, and so then that, and, and then looking at that, that cost, we then adjusted for what was, uh, related to supply, uh, and then what was related to, uh, fire based again on the asset types that were involved with the various capital projects. Uh, I will say that the supply component of the charge shows zero because all of the supply-related capital projects are related to the well supply, they're not related to, uh, the Tacoma supply, uh, which we're leaving those out of the supply component, uh, by definition. Uh, so that's really the, the nuts and bolts of how we came up with that future cost number. Yes.
Excuse me. Uh, so the 2008 study did it back inflation out as well?
Um, yes. Yeah, in general, yeah, uh, that, that's a practice that we have done for, for a long time, just recognizing the potential of accidentally double counting inflation and whatnot. It tends to, th- there's no explicit authority to include inflation in the estimates, but there's also no explicit prohibition, but it's just what we consider to be the best practice and most defensible. I mean, what will happen at the end of the day is, I mean, the CIP estimates will probably be wrong. Uh, and so when you complete the projects, you'll then book them in the, uh, as, as fixed assets that finance tracks and then the actual cost will be what gets into the charge. But for now, in kind of the interim, you have this estimate. Uh, and so we have enough variability in, in those CIP cost estimates without adding another level of variability for the inflation that we build into them.
I might say this wrong, but, um, at CDC, we were looking at a future project, you know, we have a tank that we're gonna build, like for some odd million-dollar tank, right? Um, but this tank was also something that was, we had it in the plan years ago, 2019 or whatever, that we were supposed to do it. So, the SDCs were, at that point, you know, in time collected to build that tank back then or what have you, but it wasn't built. So then they moved that tank into the future now, a couple of years down here. How's that allocation all? Shouldn't the money have already been there to build that tank back then?
Well, possibly, but we also think about how, how many connections have happened since then.
Sure.
Been a few years of connections, so I don't think that you'd be allocating the full cost only to that. I mean, the one, uh, and, and one thing to keep in mind about SDCs is they're not impact fees. And we want to make sure we keep them separate from impact fees because there's a bunch of tighter regulation around that. And, you know, if you don't, if you collect the money for the project and you don't spend it within a certain number of years, you have to refund the money, and that's not a requirement for SDCs. I would say, in, in practice, what happens is, I mean, the future cost basis is based on the best estimate of what you think you're going to spend on projects. Invariably, you know, there may be projects that get pushed off and then included in the future. I mean, the, the key thing is if you do it, it will be included in the existing asset total. And if you don't, but you're still planning to do it, uh, then it'll be in the future. Uh, we advise clients, if there's a project that's kind of a wish list thing, that you're sort of kicking down the road and you don't think there's a chance that you're really gonna do it, we would suggest taking those out. But as long as you think there's a chance that you'll do it, uh, it's, it's okay. You don't have to adjust for the fact that it was in the previous calculation and you didn't get it done between updates.
I don't know if I followed Kelly's logic fully when he was remote when we were having this discussion.
Yeah, so, you know. Yeah, my, my, I would love to lower SDCs fundamentally because I want to reduce the burden for people to build. But, the problem is, is we've had since 2012, the rate of like 9,000, and we're now gonna cut it by half. All those people that paid that fee, right? Um, were, in my mind, I'm like, did we double charge them, all those people? There's a lot of people moved to Bonnie Lake since 2012, and most of those people are single-family homes, right? Now, SDCs going forward are gonna be paid by, for the most part, multifamily homes, right? So now, what we just did is we built a system on the backs of single-family taxpayers, and now we're gonna lower the SDCs so that we can insert a whole bunch of, of, um, high-density housing at a lower cost. To me, it's not equitable, right? Um, and, and so I struggle with that, so I'm really trying to understand how we go from. On the other thing is, it's way more expensive to build stuff today than it was last year, right? Let alone 2012, right? The cost of the tank, the, the Lakewood's tank went from four to seven, if I understand it right. Are, are the costs gonna go down by half? So, I, I don't get how we can, how the numbers are going backwards for development, but prices are going up and I, I ju- it's a disconnect that I can't get in my brain. And as an advocate for a single-family home, all these people like me that, according to our demographics, commute at least 46 minutes a day, which means it doesn't take 46 minutes to get through Bonnie Lake, it takes 10 minutes to get from one end to the other. So that means they're not in Bonnie Lake working. So anyway, I want to be their advocate, and it seems to me like we just are giving developers a gift, right? And I'm not against low costs to build, I just am like, I think that demographic doesn't really want to give a gift to high-density housing. They need to pay their fair share, they don't need to overpay, we don't need to punish them. We don't need to use it as a tool to keep them from developing, that's not my intent, but just, it's like their fair share, right? And so I, that's what I don't understand it, and I've really tried to crunch all these numbers and look at it to say, how did it go backwards, right? Um, and I guess I'm still struggling to see how it went backwards. Uh, is anybody else struggling with how the numbers went down?
Uh, I thi- I think it's the supply thing that we haven't yet that I have the most questions around. But, but I don't know if you have, because what Kelly's talking about, I don't know if, I can't, I can't actually figure that timeline out either that makes too much sense, because we, you know, just exactly what he said.
Okay, so I think the next part of the discussion, we will get into that. I mean, the, the elevator speech is the reason it's going down is because the denominator went up. And now, let's go. And now let's go into, because, I mean, if we look at the cost, right? The cost of the
Or the numerator was suppressed, right? Or it was, yeah, but so I did, I was trying to do some percentages. And I'm like, if we drive the denominator down a little, but drive the numerator up, then I got to like seventy nine, right? By adjusting them both because, and that's why I was asking a lot of questions about water and some of the supply. Cause I'm like, I think if we drive the top part up by four percent and you drive the bottom part down, then you get to like seventy and seven thousand to me, I think I could probably swallow something like that. It's, it's the nine to five. I believe any, if this, yeah, so at any other time, if we had a lot of single family development that was going to happen in the next ten years, I probably would not be so hesitant, but we don't. Right? It's gonna all be, it's all gonna be multifamily from here on out.
So, so, so one thing I want to be clear about is we are in no way trying to give anybody a break. Uh, but what this is
Oh, no, I didn't think so.
Yeah, yeah, the SDC is about what is the equitable share of the cost of the system. And so now let's get into how we come up with that denominator. The two thousand eight calculation used the ERU forecast or the residential equivalent forecast from the two thousand nine water system plan. The reason it's called the two thousand nine water system plan is because these plans take a long time to get adopted. But so it was older information that went into that plan that was around at the time of the two thousand eight calculation. Uh, and so basically, uh, that forecast assumed or defined a residential equivalent as three hundred and fourteen gallons per day per residential equivalent. The most recent water system plan, two thousand twenty, I believe is the official title, uh, defined a residential equivalent as a hundred and ninety seven gallons per day. That is a decrease of like fifty nine percent, I think, if I got that right. So if we did nothing else, our existing residential equivalent number would drop, would increase significantly because the demand per residential equivalent went down. So that's, that's part of the puzzle.
And is the residential equivalent going down having to do with the, um, updates and technology as far as, um, water saving toilets?
Conservation, yes.
Okay.
So it's obviously there's behavior change by conservation messaging and, and pricing signals in the rate structure. And then there's just better technology, so water saving, shower heads and toilets and all that. So all those factors together, you know, have driven this down considerably, you know, over time.
So do we, do we use fifty nine percent less of our water today than we did in twenty?
No, because the total number of residential equivalents is greater. Because if you think of a single family home is one residential equivalent by definition. Uh, and so what, I mean, what that shows is the demand has not increased with the number of connections that you have, that you serve. Uh, it, it's, the per capita water consumption has continued to go down. And this is not unique to Bonnie Lake. This is, this has happened everywhere. And will only continue to happen as, you know, the housing density continues and you have more lots packed in. I mean, the, the irrigation and other stuff is going to go down, uh, especially as the price of water goes up and you have people installing, uh, different landscaping or artificial turf to further reduce their bill.
Brass paint.
Exactly.
I'm, I'm buying that from Amazon before the week's end.
All right.
So this is, this is the Bonnie Lake Water System Plan.
Yes.
Approved in twenty twenty.
Yeah. And so that was a pretty shocking difference in how you define the water use of a single home. But that, I mean, like, like I said, if we did nothing else, just, you know, we have our, whatever the demand was back in two thousand, you know, eight that led to that, uh, residential equivalent calculation. If we apply the current definition, the number of residential equivalents that you could serve goes way up because each individual one is using less. So that's part of it.
So, uh, sorry, you're kind of interchanging some different words such as like forecast and def, based on a definition. And so my question is, this hundred and ninety seven gallons per day, this change from three hundred and fourteen, this is, this is actually from averaged data. This is not just some forecasted or defined number, right?
So the water system plan used an average, I forget the exact period.
They used actual data.
Yeah, actual historical data to come up with that as an.
Okay.
And the three fourteen also was based on the same methodology. I mean, they might've used a different period, but it's
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all based on actual data, not, not projections.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, in the water system plan, they use a hundred and seventy nine gallons per day for residential equivalent to forecast future demands and look at your supply needs. Uh, but for the purpose of actually defining the residential equivalent, that's based on actual data.
Okay.
And so that's the first part. The second part is if you can see kind of the part that I've, I've highlighted here, the two thousand eight calculation used growth over the, the capital project planning period. So, uh, the, the forecast included the six year CIP. And so it looked at growth in residential equivalents over the six year period. That's, in, in our opinion today, based on the best practices, that's, that's too low of a period if the capacity can serve more than six years of growth. So, so really we're trying to answer a different question. Back then it was, you know, how much growth is going to happen over the planning period? Now it's what's your capacity and how many, you know, residential equivalents can that serve? And that expands the period that we're covering. Uh, and I'll get, you know, more into that momentarily.
Well, I do have a hypothetical with that. That's the second time you've used the term best practices. And I want, uh, what I need to know is the database for the Best Practices Act. Uh, I mean, obviously you do work for, for many, many cities.
Yes.
Is that a best practice for just this area? Or is it Pierce County or is it statewide?
So honestly, we're, we're, we're doing SDCs all over the Western United States. This is the general methodology we're using. And in having discussions with, uh, industry wide associations like the American Waterworks Association.
I see.
Yeah, it's, you know, we might have slightly different ways of, of coming to that number. But it's really, you know, if you have a system that costs ten million dollars and it can serve, and it can serve ten thousand equivalents, you take your cost divided by the number it can serve, and that's what each one should pay.
Yeah, because this is, uh, um, getting my, my day job. I, I just think of liability and the fiduciary duty that we as a council and, and mayorship have, uh, to the citizens as to what we have to do here as far as the stewards and, you know, and, and keeping the money. And so the way I'm looking at this, when you say best practices, is if it's a uniform, if it's something that if we were taken to court, we would be able to back up.
Yes, and in my, my opinion, if you were taken to court over this, I think you would be in a much stronger position using the, the updated number.
Okay.
Because, yeah, because I mean, like, for example, the example I was just laying out. So you have a ten million dollar system that can serve ten thousand customers. There's your, you know, one by, by others, your cost. The fact that you have five thousand now and you're projecting five hundred, you know, growth over the next five years.
Right.
That shouldn't be your denominator. I mean, it's more equitable to do it over everyone that can benefit from that system, kind of regardless of when they connect, because you have no way of knowing. So it's a little bit of an awkward situation. I mean, I think back in two thousand eight, it was more common to just look at growth over the planning period, but there's better information available.
So not, not as arbitrary and capricious.
Exactly, and that's the key standard. So, you know, if somebody were to say, oh, Bonnie Lake, you owe us money compared to what we paid, you know, ten years ago. No, I mean, it was based on a reasonable methodology back then. It's just, and especially with the way costs have gone up and, you know, everybody's looking at, you know, having issues paying for things. The best thing you can do is make sure everybody pays for the equitable share.
Okay.
This, I think, is a sharpened pencil on what that is.
So isn't there a recommended, uh, isn't there an industry standard for gallons per day per RE type of?
No.
Cause it looks like this is like driven off of our experience.
Yes, and, and, and it should be. Cause I mean, ultimately, you know, ultimately the customers that are, are going to define how many customers you can serve are the ones that connect to your system. So, yeah, I mean, if you go to other parts of the country, it'll, it'll likely be different. But the universal trend is whatever, wherever it is, uh, it's gone down, uh, over time.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine.
Yeah, but I say, for example, Cascade Waterline, uh, you know, probably ten, fifteen years ago, I, I, their connection charge calculation, we're trying to find what that residential equivalent was. And we looked at all the member agencies, so what's your demand per, you know, residential equivalent? No one's was the same. You know, some Amish, for example, they're much higher than say Skyway, one or two. So there are demographic factors, income, socioeconomic factors that will influence what that number is.
Interesting.
But yeah, there's no one side. There's a general range, like for example, I, I would say three hundred and fourteen gallons per day, probably high. I mean, I would say for a water system, you know, it's more, if you look at sort of average daily demand, uh, I mean, even one ninety seven is relatively high compared to what we see in some areas. But I mean, there, there's no right or wrong. It's just the nature of your customer base. And that's what you have to plan to meet, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Uh, Jason, who, who made that calculation, a hundred and ninety seven gallons? Can I ask?
So from my memory, when I was helping do the growth rate analysis for the twenty twenty comprehensive plan, the way I understood it was they took the water flow for the different customer uses and then took the total, you know, number of people that are in that customer class and the total amount of water that is done in that customer class. And my understanding that came directly from utility billing data, uh, that, that, and how they got to the hundred and ninety seven. That's, that's how I'm doing it off the top of my memory. Is it was based on data driven right out of our system based on the customer class.
And that sounds about right. So, yeah, there's a table, I forget which one off the top of my head, but it shows like water consumption by customer class. And it equates it to gallons per day per residential equivalent. There's a number of residence equivalents, uh, and that's where they, they came up with.
And, and I would say one big change between two thousand eight and two twenty twenty is the changes in the building code that did force a lot of mandatory water consumption devices that were installed. So low flow toilets, different shower heads, different faucets, uh, that were mandated through the building code. So as you built new homes, you were automatically installing those features.
Right. So then we'll get into the proposed methodology. Uh, and so the first step is to estimate existing residential equivalents based on how the city imposes SDCs. So multifamily, it's a point seven seven residential equivalents per, uh, per dwelling unit. And so we, we had an inventory of dwelling units from the city. And so there are about sixteen hundred residential equivalents for multifamily. Uh, for everybody else, we looked at, uh, meter size. Uh, and I mean, technically speaking, uh, city policy says anything one and a half inches or over is subject to a custom analysis. But, I mean, for the purpose of this analysis, we use the industry standard factors because they're readily known as opposed to guessing what random customers uh, would be assigned based on their usage pattern.
In other words, best practice.
Yes, I'll, I'll throw that word out there. Uh, and so, uh, so we came up with about, uh, a total of seventeen thousand eight hundred sixty one residential equivalents. That's the existing number. Uh, we then looked at a history of maximum day demand, uh, for the total system. And it varied from six point seven million gallons per day in twenty nineteen to, uh, eight point nine seven, uh, million gallons per day in twenty twenty one. Uh, and so the average for the four year period was seven point eight five million gallons per day. Uh, and so if you take that and equate it to a, a maximum daily demand per residential equivalent, we get about four hundred and thirty nine point five. Now, as I was kind of looking at some of the questions that I was forwarded, I looked at the system plan and said, well, what are they assuming for, uh, maximum day demand? And if you use the three year average, or sorry, the five year average, it's like four hundred and thirty three gallons per day. And if you look at the ten year average, it's like four hundred and twenty. So it's really, really close. Uh, the fact that, um, the meter equivalents were, were seen in a slightly higher definition results in a slightly lower denominator and a slightly higher charge, but it's really comparable.
Was COVID taken into account here considering that during the twenty nineteen to twenty two, twenty two period, more people were at home, which would reflect more water usage?
It, it would. Uh, this did not make an explicit, uh, adjustment for COVID. But I mean, looking at the water system plan that looked at like ten years prior to the COVID, it came up with a five year average. It was twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen of, uh, of four point three three, uh, sorry, uh, four hundred and thirty three, sorry, gallons per day. And then the ten year average, uh, was four hundred and twenty. So it's in the same ballpark. So I don't think the, the average is, is reasonably consistent with, with the past. And so I, I guess the, the punchline here is the fact that we're using meter equivalents. And the reason we're using meter equivalents is to better align with how the city actually imposes the charge.
Well, that makes sense.
Uh, but it, it's, it's not having a big effect on, it actually mitigates the decrease slightly. Uh, but the real difference is we're looking at total system capacity versus just that six year period. And so now the next step, now that we know that
What was the calculation when you did the one ninety seven? What was that for then? If
The one ninety seven came from the system plan. That wasn't my calculation. So, so part of it was
Well, are you going to use the four thirty nine?
So, so I'm actually not using the one ninety seven. So the reason I brought it up is because if we stayed with the average day demand basis, the three fourteen would go down to one ninety seven.
Yeah.
Uh, but we look at what is constraining the system. Is it peak demand, max day, or is it average? And so it's, it's max day that's really driving
Sure.
The system. So that's why I'm using that. That's saying, you know, I can serve this many, uh, residential equivalents on an average day basis. I can serve this many on a max day basis. And because that's less, I, I can't serve more customers on an average day basis than I can serve on a max day basis. Uh, so that's, that's why I'm using that as the basis for a residential equivalent.
Four thirty nine?
Yeah. Uh, and so then we get to, uh, the water system plan and it's a breakdown of source capacity. Uh, and so, uh, the number I circled here, this is saying the reliable source capacity of the system is nine thousand four hundred and eighty gallons per minute. That includes the Tacoma supply. Uh, we had confirmed, uh, prior to one of the previous sessions that that, that's a contract number that is available to the city. That is in addition to any emergency inertight capacity that the system could use in an emergency, but can't really plan for. Uh, and so based on the four hundred and thirty nine point five, uh, you know, gallons per day of max day demand, uh, we get a total residential equivalent capacity of thirty one thousand sixty.
So what's that? Uh, the, you, you have it labeled as wholesale supply and basically that's the Tacoma supply, is that what?
Yes, that's correct. And this table came right out of the water system. That's why it doesn't match the formatting of that presentation.
Yeah. And of, of note, of course, we've always had, you know, forever the ability to take as much water, but it's probably a little bit different from Tacoma and Auburn and other places. But those are, you know, and we've had to do that on occasion. I don't know how that factors into that piece. But the, uh, the peaking storage supply equivalent, what's the meaning of that wording there?
So I, I actually saw that myself and it was sort of interesting. I, I, I looked into it. I, I believe, uh, and I don't know if, if you have any better insight on this, but I think really it was in developing an estimate of the capacity, there is a reservoir that is dedicated to meeting peak demands. That's what it's
There, there is, I think, if that's the one you're referring to. Cause we do have a peaking storage capacity facility. But, right? I don't know how that would be additive to system capacity, right?
Yeah, so I think part of what the water system plan, and I don't, you started to say something.
I, I'll need to check with Ryan, but it could be the difference between the total capacity of the tank and the capacity needed for the peaking day, for that, for that, for that peak period. That, that's, I, I have, I'd have to check with Ryan and find out how those two numbers got arrived at the water system plan.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing is, uh, we, we asked our H two to confirm, you know, what is the maximum day capacity of the system? Uh, and he said, he confirmed that that reliable source capacity was the number.
Yeah, that, that, that also is the people that told us five years ago that we were going to need all this capacity, that we absolutely had to buy, that we were going to be out of water about, what, next year, Tom? Yeah, okay. So, you know, your numbers now have proved their numbers different, right? Um, so I'm, I'm concerned about the peaking storage being in there because it's just that, it's a bucket. It doesn't produce any storage itself. It, it, it doesn't produce any supply itself. So how's that?
I, I think, I guess, and, and my guess, which we have to confirm with Ryan, is it's, it's more of an issue of your water rights where you have
Yeah, exactly.
A QA annual quantity versus instantaneous quantity. So effectively what that would be doing is taking during the off peak period, storing it and then using it in a way that doesn't tax the water, the aquifer during the peak period.
Right, but QA, QI, you know, you gotta, and that's why I don't know how it would add in there because I don't see how it's adding anything.
Well, it's allowing you to use water during the peak period that you wouldn't be able to use if you didn't have that reservoir. Because you're, you're only allowed to draw so much out of the aquifer during, at, at one time.
But it
But, yeah.
Tacoma is the same, you know, you can, we don't very techie argument.
It, it is a techie argument and, and I'm not an engineer. So, uh, yeah, so I think part of it is
Cause I'm wondering, and, and I guess maybe it may be a, a difference without a distinction, you know, what happens if I say, well, you can't use peaking storage and I take out eleven hundred and sixty? What does that do?
Well, that, that would decrease the denominator and, and it would increase the charge, at least relative to what we're showing now. I don't know that it would get you back up to where you currently are.
No, 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 I just want to be as accurate as possible. That's what this exercise is about, is to be accurate.
Yes.
I was waiting for the SDC cost basis with bated breath. I have to leave. Deputy Mayor, thank you for taking over the chair.
Hi.
This is good seeing you again.
Good seeing you too.
So, bye, guys.
Have fun.
Oh, he looked ahead, I see that.
You were teasing him.
Yes.
Well, no, wait. No, yeah.
So, I mean, I suppose that's something, I, I feel like we talked to Ryan about that. He confirmed with RH2 that that was the number. I mean, if it turns out that that number should come out, then it would affect the calculation. But at least based on the conversations we've had with Ryan and RH2, that is the best estimate of what the system could provide during the peaks on the max day, basically.
Yeah, I guess I'd be interested in seeing how they arrived at the numbers with other ones because if they're not using QI, if they're using QIs on the other and then they're supplementing the QA with that one, it might flow. But if they're using QAs on the other one, then it couldn't possibly be useful because it's not an additional.
I, I guess the trade-off is if you didn't have that and you had your demands getting, exceeding that point, you know, that would be probably having some additional capital improvements if you'd have to have fund by the ratepayers that are not built in because we're showing that there's enough capacity to meet those. So.
Well, through, yeah, SD, through the growth.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the denominator before we move on to the cost basis? All right. Let's jump on into it. All right. The cost basis, we include the original cost of, of assets. We include construction progress as stuff that the city has invested in. But it isn't booked as an existing asset and it's not included in the CIP. So making sure we don't lose those investments. Interest is accrued on the existing assets. Statute allows you to include up to 10 years on each asset based on when it was acquired. And then the projected cost of capital projects, again, in current dollars, not inflated dollars. Things that we exclude, projects that were funded by grants or developer contributions. So that's both on the existing side and as well as the future side. And I think especially with the city being cash, using the cash basis of accounting, the main things that are booked are what the city is actually spending money on. So I feel like that, that tends to fix itself, like you're not booking expenditures that you didn't make. But for the future capital plan, if there are things developers are going to pay for or grants are going to fund, we take those out. We take out utility-funded meters and services to recognize that a developer will have to pay for their own meter and service line, so not charging them for a share of other people. The estimated cost of assets being retired as a result of the planned capital project. So we have projects that replace stuff. We don't want to charge for an asset and its replacement at the same time. So we, we try to adjust for the estimated cost, yes.
Jason has the answer that you're seeking.
Oh, okay.
Technology is amazing. So in talking with Ryan, it's the way it was classified with the Department of Health. The Department of Health considers that a design source and not a storage source. So it's not counted in our, in our storage capacity. It's counted in our source capacity, which is why it's listed as a source capacity on the table. It's how that water source, how that water was classified. So it was classified and considered by the Department of Health as a, as a source of water, not the storage of water and the sources for, to meet those peak demand periods. So it's there for the very purpose of Chris, Chris using the 439. It's the, it's the source for the peak.
And likewise, we're not increasing capacity to reflect the equalizing storage in the, in the other reservoirs. It's, it's really focusing on what's classified as source.
Yeah, it was classified as a source with DOH when we got the thing. That's, that's the extent of my knowledge because I'm, I am channeling Ryan.
Which still doesn't kind of like totally make sense, but I'll have to dig into it some more.
Okay.
Again, it doesn't produce water, you know, it's not like a well or something. It's a storage spot. It's a big pipe.
I mean, with my, my finance person understanding, I will say, my guess is it's, it's just taking water at another time and having it available where you wouldn't be able to get it.
Sure. Yeah.
And that, counting that as additional supply, the purpose of meeting those peak demands.
Was that included in the 2008 calculation?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to verify that.
Would we have gotten a number like that out of a previous water plan?
Yeah, it would have, yeah, we'd have to check the 2009 system plan because it would have been the source breakdown from that plan.
But assume our capacity is like an asset, basically, right? Type of.
Yes, I mean, yeah, but the asset schedule would theoretically include what you paid to Tacoma to acquire capacity.
Because, because I could sell my excess capacity today to something else.
You could. That would reduce the, the numerator and the denominator. And so it would remain to be seen sort of the net impact on the charge, but.
Sure.
Then you could find yourself having to buy more capacity at the current price down the road if you ever got to that point. I don't.
Well, depends on who you sell it to.
Well, exactly. But you can get it for us. Okay. So then, let's see here. The allocation of the cost basis to supply. As I mentioned before, the 2008 calculation segregated the supply costs away from the other infrastructure costs with the goal of charging growth for the more expensive Tacoma supply. And so, and basically the premise was those Tacoma supply costs would be attributable exclusively to growth. And so the SEC calculation excluded the cost of city well supply and treatment facilities. And basically, at the time, I ran a calculation, if we did not do that, the calculated SDC would have been, was $400 higher than if we had had that blended supply number. So basically, if we didn't separate supply and allocate the Tacoma supply to growth, the charge would have been $400 lower than what it actually was. And so then, looking at the updated calculation, I, I ran two scenarios for you. One in which we kept that separate Tacoma supply. And so you can see down there, if we look at the Tacoma supply costing, existing investment of about 12.7 million, adding 5.8 million of interest, we get about 18 and a half million. We then divide by the growth in residential equivalents because that's the marginal cost, the cost of that future supply allocated to growth. We get a charge of about $1,400. And that's included in that 5766 that I presented before. If you were to go to an average supply cost and basically say, let's include the cost of the wells, let's include, you know, the Tacoma supply, and then it gets averaged out over everybody, then, you know, the charge goes down by roughly $80. And so I'm not necessarily saying that you should do that. The main reason I did that was to show you what's the impact of that choice. And, you know, one of the reasons why the, you know, we're only looking at about an $80 difference in the charge versus $400 is because our denominator is much larger than it was back then. So that growth number was a lot smaller. So if we allocate all the cost of Tacoma supply to growth, you know, there was a bigger difference back then than there is today. So, the, the key takeaway from this slide, the motivation for doing that separation was to get a higher charge and make sure that growth was paying for that Tacoma supply. The incremental cost of doing that was about $400 per residential equivalent. And now, the current calculation, all things considered, the marginal benefit to you of, of doing that is about $80 per residential equivalent. So it's fine to stay the way it is. In fact, I'm not recommending any major changes from what we've been doing, but just so you understand the impact of that decision. The next thing we'll get into is the allocation of cost to fire protection. As I mentioned, the purpose of this is to improve equity by recognizing differences in fire. And so basically, I ran a calculation, well, what happens if we don't separate the fire component out and we just include it in the other component like we did in the 2008 calculation? And so if we did that, the SDC for a residential equivalent would go up by about $190. Like I said before, if we take out the fire differential, commercial and multifamily STCs will go down and then the single-family and irrigation STCs will go up. And the difference for a single-family residence is about $192. So if something that could be done, doesn't have to be done. But you can kind of see, if we want to sharpen the pencil on, on equity and make sure that we're recovering the cost of oversizing for fire flow from the land use types that have that higher fire flow requirement, that's, that's why we're doing what we're. Any, any questions about that? All right, so then we'll go to the schedule of water SDCs. Like I've shown, three, three options here. There's the, the first column is the existing charge. The, the middle column is the proposed. That's basically the updated calculation that I showed at the beginning of the presentation. That goes from $9,095 to $5,766 for a single-family residence, a new single-family residence. If we were to do the consolidated charge, so we get rid of the supply component and the fire component and just have one, I like what we're doing for the other utilities, then it would be 5,493. So it would be a greater reduction in the charge. And then you can see multifamily per, per unit. It goes from 7,300, that's 0.77 times the 9,095. And, you know, keeping that same differential, it would be 4440 per dwelling unit under the proposed structure and 4230 under the alternative structure. And then commercial, you can kind of see the, the impact based on the, the meter size. So, you know, right now, a five-eighth inch commercial meter pays $11,565 compared to the single-family residents paying $9,095. We can keep that differential under the middle column and then the right column eliminates it. So they basically pay the same that a comparable single-family connection would pay. And then kind of the same thing with irrigation. So, just to provide kind of the, the bird's eye view of what the different options would look like. And, you know, I think the middle column is still what we're proposing right now. The one on the right is more for information unless you feel like a valid reason to go that direction.
You're talking about under the alternative consolidated charge?
Exactly. So I would say that's, that's mainly for information, but you could go that way if you wanted to. It would simplify the charge, but it would increase what single-family residents is paying and reduce what others pay, multifamily and commercial specifically.
Is it common for commercial to be more anyways?
Um, it's not as common. I mean, you can justify it based on the fire flow requirement differential, but I, I would say more often, we're just doing a, an aggregate calculation and everybody pays the same, like a five-eighth inch residential meter pays the same thing as a five-eighth inch commercial. So that's just a policy call on your part. And then in case it helps to see the, the survey, and this reflects the updated sewer and stormwater charges, even though they technically don't go into effect until next month. But, I mean, the existing charge, you know, puts you kind of the upper-middle part of the range. The updated charges puts you right in the middle. And there's not a huge difference between the proposed and alternate for a, for a single-family residence. But, again, like I said, it really comes down to a policy call. So, so that's the end of the formal presentation, but I'm happy to go circle back to anything.
Just a comment for, you know, everyone that, what I was thinking, because I know that Councilman McLemus mentions multifamily and stuff and it is probably accurate to point out that, you know, it's important to get this right and get the calculations right so that they can be defended legally. And it, it does make a large difference with the amount of multifamily that's coming in because, you know, if you use an example of where you're going to build like 1,000 homes or something like that, 1,000 multifamily, I should say, right? You know, if you're building 1,000 of them, at whatever rate it is, if you can move the needle a couple of thousand dollars for 1,000 homes, you're talking some real money eventually. But it is what it is. It has to be accurate to the cost of what attributable. But, you know, under the old rate, you're, you're losing the differential, millions of dollars when you're doing these big developments. So it's, it's important to get it right.
Any other questions or comments?
Kelly.
Concerned with requirements?
So. If we decrease the multifamily by 2,000, we have 1,000 units. That's $2 million.
Roughly, plus or minus. Depends on what your excise tax comes out to be.
Yeah. Okay.
Utility. Yay.
Well, I mean, I, I think the big thing, you know, I mean, there could be further discussion on that peaking reservoir and whether or not that should be included in the capacity. But I feel like that's sort of be for the engineers to consider and justify. I mean, I think we had a pretty solid explanation of what it is. So I, I don't see it dramatically changing from what we're showing here. As some new information comes out.
You have something to say, Councilmember Swallow?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? No? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Great job.
Absolutely, thank you.
Appreciate all your knowledge.
Good explanation.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to our next, or our first discussion item. Adam Clark?
Easy one, parking.
Right?
Okay. Sorry about that. Next discussion item is item D, which is AB 2382, ordinance D 2382, relating to restricted parking on Sky Island Drive.
Discussion? Councilmember Baldwin?
Read all the things, read all the emails, looked at all the pictures, been there. I agree. So I, I definitely agree with, with the permanent change for it to stay a non-parking area.
Okay. Councilmember Fullerton?
So I was kind of back and forth last week. But I had, like I said, I had spoken to residents of Sky Island Drive and I've read all of the emails. And the argument of, you know, whether it's constitutional to basically take property because it's public, it's a public road. However, the example was given to me that 167 is also a public road. And you can't park on certain parts of Highway 167 because of safety reasons. And so kind of going back and forth on looking at all of the pictures and, you know, of course, all of the arguments, I'm gonna side with what the people have asked me. I haven't gotten one pro making it a parking zone from anybody. And I have asked people to please let us know what they're thinking. And so I've only gotten cons on making it a parking area. And yes, it is a public roadway. However, there are a lot of safety issues involved with allowing people to park there, with people crossing over the meridian to avoid the cars, also the, the people walking across the street to go and party or look at the sunset during the, in those blind corners and everything. So I think for safety issues, I'm going to go ahead and go with no parking and leave it permanent. Or make it permanent. Unless we want to like make it no parking and keep it temporary again to see how things go for, without a pandemic. But according to the president, it was, and I believe, I'm not sure if it was Chief Jeter that sent an email as well, saying that prior to the pandemic, it was still hazardous.
It's the record, the president of Sky Island HOA, not, not the president.
The president.
For the record. Not the president of the United States of America, no, yes.
He's really weighing in on some local issues.
Called Joe Biden personally, and I just wanted to know what he thought about the parking lot area. Yes, no, I meant the, the president of the HOA of Sky Island, yes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm just gonna say it. I'm gonna stick with making it permanent. It's gonna be my decision. I'm not gonna flip-flop on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson?
Thank you. It was never built for parking along the roadway there. It's not set up for people to cross. It's not set up for people to cross it, as we're always saying, with crosswalks there. It's a very dangerous area. Weather has changed dramatically in the last 10 years. We used to be cloudy quite a bit. People wouldn't park out there. Now the weather's changing where it's more clear and not raining as much as it was, so people are using the area. So I think it should stay restricted and as a permanent. We shouldn't continue to discuss it every year. And again, Chief Jeter also brought our attention, the problems why they shouldn't be parking there, issues they run into, and I think we should go by that direction. And I, that's how I would decide anyway, too. Some of the votes, we should leave it a permanent, no parking through there.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Evans.
I want to say thank you to Chief Jeter and/or going out and taking the pictures, putting together the data and the information. It was all great. I know how beautiful that view is. I see it every day, multiple times a day. Being that we're not taking away the view and still allowing them to park and everyone could use a good walk from the parking ride. And so I've been for the no parking sign since the beginning. I'm still for the no parking sign. So I'm okay with removing the sunset clause on, I believe that's what we would be doing. Making it, yeah, making the ban permanent, yeah.
Back to Councilmember Watson, I guess.
I have a thought though, too, that we've also talked about parking at the parking ride and stuff. Many people don't know that. We might consider putting signs, parking available at the parking ride, you know, one mile north or something. Because if you're going there and you're just driving through the area, you have no idea where you can go. You don't park on people's lawns or up in the private HOA area. So we might, some have a map, some, but if you put on the same post, parking available at the parking ride one mile north would be helpful for the people, too. If I'm just driving to the first time, we're hell going apart.
Wooden sign?
I put a wooden sign there.
Those would be low.
Councilmember McLemus.
Yeah, so I was for enforcing the sunset clause because I thought this was an example of government taking something, right? And I'm always against government taking unless there's an extraordinary reason. In this case, during COVID, there was. It was a significant problem. That didn't exist before COVID. There was probably some level of incidents occurring before COVID. But during COVID, it was definitely a problem, so it was understandable. So then that's why the sun clause is on there, is because this was a mechanism that allowed law enforcement to help deal with that problem. And now the problem's not there, right? It's not there. So why do we need to keep the signs? This is a classic example of government taking and never giving back. You know, actually, though, I think the publics have a chance to talk about this. And like, you know, Councilmember Fullerton said, I don't know anybody who said, yeah, we want to go, it shouldn't be no parking there, right? Everybody's like, yeah, man, I've gotten, the best I've gotten is man. So, which is, you know, which is okay, I guess. So I think I would struggle to vote yes on this, but I appreciate the chief's input, so. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fullerton.
I actually do have a question for discussion. Probably for Chief Jeter, because I noticed like during the garage sales that we had this last weekend, or the weekend before last, they allow people to park in the gravel all along the park on Sky Island Drive, as well as, so on the east and the west side of Sky Island Drive, not down the hill there where the no parking signs are. But as far as driving through Sky Island, they have, and at Christmas time, they allow people to park there to come and walk through the neighborhood and see all of the Christmas lights and Halloween and when the kids are going trick-or-treating. So can they not park there to watch the sunset and not have to go all the way down to the parking ride?
Mainly because we don't have the staff to enforce it. Still no parking. You shouldn't park there. It's not safe. Halloween is a few hours, one night a year. The garage sale is hit and miss for two days out of the year versus several days. Yeah, and it can be because I know some of the residents in Skyland don't really appreciate the garage sale or the Halloween or the Christmas light, the people. And there's not as much parking for Christmas lights. It's more drive-through. So it's, I haven't noticed that anyhow, so we don't get the complaints for those events.
Yeah, so I'm referring to like up at the top?
I know where you're talking about. Still, there's no parking there as well.
Yeah, because I don't see the signs there. I only see them down that hill.
And the shoulders are a lot small.
Yeah.
Can fit a car where the signs are. So again, it's just, we don't have the problem but for Halloween, basically, on the upper section of Sky Island Drive. And I believe that section of Sky Island Drive is already no parking, but it's just not sun. Is that accurate, Jason? You know? No parking.
I don't think we really have an issue because, I mean, people have a parking lot for the park. But I was just thinking, well, shoot, if they don't, if that's not zoned as a no parking area, then just park up at the top of the hill and walk down, you know, a few hundred feet.
You're gonna have the same issues and it's, I mean, there's the shoulder even smaller up top. So that if they start parking up to you, we would be coming back and asking to extend the no parking. So, which is, again, it's not safe up there.
Bike lane. Make sure, put a bike lane over.
Right. Is that before our current sidewalk projects or after?
All the above.
That would be way before. Yeah. I would just add that the parking up there at the top makes it very difficult for anybody who's trying to pull out because it's not safe. You can't see around the other vehicles on both sides. So specifically on days where there's the garage sale. You're kind of taking your life in your own hands as you pull out there. So super unsafe right now. And I would also like to say thank you to Councilmember McLemus for putting the sunset clause on this initially to give council an opportunity to talk about it with citizens and decide if this is something we really wanted to do or not as an ongoing thing. I also have heard nothing but pros as far as having, keeping it a no parking deal or making it permanent no parking. I haven't heard any cons from everybody I've talked to, from, you know, discussions to emails to phone calls and all those things. So I appreciate that and I appreciate Chief Jeter and Mr. John Stone for going out there and providing that data as well. So thank you for that.
I was Angela.
It was the modesty panel.
Modesty panel.
Nice.
Oh, a modesty panel.
So.
Ladies are getting carried away over there.
Where's that? Maybe D40 when you need it.
Any other discussion on that item?
Okay to bring to consent next week?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Moving on to our next discussion item. Madam Clark.
This is discussion item E, which is AB 23101, ordinance D 23101, relating to amendment, us keeping of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code chapters 2.08 all the way through 2.70. This is the last of chapter two.
Discussion? This was essentially correcting everything that we had talked about before, yes?
Yes. Just keeping everything to what we're currently doing and languages.
All right. I think we're good for consent then.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Easy.
Appreciate that. I think that's it then. No executive or closed session. See, no more business. We are adjourned. Thank you.